Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it's seven o'clock. Let's call the meeting to order. First item of business is Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all stand and join me. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Calling to order a special town meeting of the Town of Dalton has been called by a warrant signed by our Select Board on June 6th of 2019, properly posted by Councilor Jeffrey Coe at the usual locations within the Town of Dalton at least fourteen days prior to today's date. Introducing the stage for you today, we have Jeff Noble and we have William Droshin from the Finance Committee. We have your town clerk, Deborah Mary. To my left, we have Kenneth Walto, Town Clerk. I'm sorry. You like that? Been promoting him. We have Ken Walto, Town Manager. We have Joe Bard, a Town Council who just showed up. And we have members of the Select Board. We have our new member on the far end, Joseph Diver. We have John Bartel, Robert Bishop. I'm sorry, John Bartel is retired. That's where Joe comes in. Bob Bishop, Mark Strout, and John Boyle. For the record, this meeting is being recorded. According to Massachusetts law, you need to know that. First item of business, as usual, I would entertain a motion to waive the formal reading of the warrant.
So.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by saying no. Thank you. Article one, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money from available funds to be reimbursed by a grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in accordance with Chapter 90, Section 34 of the Massachusetts General Laws or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Droshin.
I move that the town vote to appropriate $222,689 from available funds to be reimbursed by a grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in accordance with Chapter 90, Section 34 of the Massachusetts General Law.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no. Thank you. That passes unanimously. Article two, to see if the town will vote to raise, appropriate, and/or transfer from available funds a sum of money to fund additional expenses in fiscal year 2019 in Department Number 423, Snow and Ice incurred under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 31D, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Droshin.
I move that the town vote to transfer $52,698 from free cash in the treasury to account number 432, Snow and Ice, for the purpose of funding additional costs in said account as follows. $7,299 to salaries and $45,399 to expenses.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Droshin. That's 423, Department Number 423. Okay, 423. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by saying no. Passes unanimously. Article three, this requires a two-thirds vote. To see if the town will vote to appropriate and/or transfer from the Capital Stabilization Fund a sum of money for the costs related to the fiscal year 2020 annual element of the capital improvement program or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Droshin.
Now here the most latest version. I move that the town vote to transfer $140,652 from the Capital Stabilization Fund for the fiscal year 2020, capital improvement program as follows. $54,000 for a new police cruiser and related equipment. $86,652 for a new one-ton plow truck and related equipment. And further, that the remainder of the $15,000 appropriated at the special town meeting of June 26, 2017, for plans, specifications, and estimates for an insulation project at the town hall, be also expressly authorized for plans, specifications, and estimates for improving handicapped accessibility at the town hall or any other purpose for improving the town hall as approved by the Select Board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
Aye, Rich Holt, 1643 Ridge Drive. The $15,000 for the specifications of that, I thought that had already been hopeful through a different grant.
Mr. Walto.
Subsequent to this $15,000 appropriation, the town received a grant for $12,000 from the state. The actual cost of the architectural engineering study was $13,000, so there's $14,000 remaining. And handicapped accessibility remains a priority for trying to improve the town hall.
Anyone else? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor of Article three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no.
No.
Passes by over two-thirds. Article four, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money for extraordinary sewer system expenses, including borrowing costs associated with said program and all other costs incidental or related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said sum under General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, or any other enabling authority, and that the Select Board is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project. And further, that any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs or to take any other action in relation thereto. This will require a two-thirds vote as well. Mr. Droshin.
I move that the town vote to appropriate $150,000 for a sewer system evaluation survey, including borrowing costs associated with said program and all other costs incidental or related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer will, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said sum under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, or any other enabling authority, and that the Select Board is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project. And further, that any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws 44, Section 20, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Bruce Lester, 84 Mountain View Terrace. Just a quick question here. It looks like it's going to cost us $250,000 in the end if we appropriate this $250,000. Now, my question is, when this is all said and done, will this study provide us with the information on the condition of our sewer system and what we're going to need to appropriate in the future to pay for these repairs? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walto.
Part of the investigation will have cameras going through the sewer system. I think there's about...
There's not one question. My question is, when all said and done, will we have the information?
We'll...
On the condition and what it's going to cost us to fix the sewer system? That's our question.
I believe we will.
All right. I understand the process.
Okay.
You believe your will.
Yes.
So why spend $250,000 if you don't know? What the end result is going to be?
This first study is required to pinpoint where the excess water is coming into the system. Part of that study will provide us with information about how to fix the system. Whether it'll locate, give us information on every problem in the system, I don't know.
In addition, what is Pitts Hill going to ask us for increased sewer fees in the future for their new sewer treatment plan? That's all involved is our sewer system. Anybody got a pine scatting over?
We don't know yet. All we know is there's $60 million of improvements going on with the sewer system, but we haven't seen any.
We own 12% of that.
Little less.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor of Article four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no.
No.
Passes by more than two-thirds. Article five, to see if the town will vote to authorize payment of unpaid bills of previous fiscal years pursuant to the requirements of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 64, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Droshin.
I move that the town vote to authorize payment of the balance of an unpaid bill of $222 to KP Law for fiscal year 18 pursuant to the requirements of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 64, and further, that said amount be paid from free cash in the treasury.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor of Article five signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Article six, to see if the town will vote to amend the code of the Town of Dalton, Chapter 270, Solid Waste, by striking Article two in its entirety and substituting the language substantially in the form on file with the town clerk or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Droshin. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Bishop.
I move that the town vote to amend code of the Town of Dalton, Chapter 270, Solid Waste, by striking Article two in its entirety and substituting the language as shown on the handout attached thereto.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
Just Andre Robert, 5 Lindsay Drive.
Thank you.
I just have a question. In the proposal itself, the amendment, under banned material, I don't understand why recyclable paper and cardboard and paperboard are under banned materials and then they're also under recyclables? Are they recyclable or not?
Okay. Yes. Please identify yourself. I know you're on the committee.
Jenny Gitlitz.
Thank you.
Two Pomeray Ave, Dalton. The banned material means...
I'm sorry. Would you tell us what committee you're on in?
Yes, sure. Yeah, I was going to do that in the morning. I'm on the Green Dalton Committee, and I wrote this proposed bylaw with members of the Green Dalton Committee with assistance and support from Ken Walto and the entire Board of Health, and also the Western Mass Recycling Coordinator from the Department of Environmental Protection. And one of the intentions of this bylaw is to bring our town into compliance with the state waste bans. And what those are, we're not allowed to have statewide mandatory recycling in Massachusetts due to Prop 2 and 1/2. And the way that the DEP got around that is by banning recyclable material from disposal in landfills and incinerators. So that's something that's already on the books at the state level. And so indeed, all recyclable materials are banned from landfill and incinerator.
So that means banned from landfills and incinerators, not banned from recycling?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes.
Can I finish the statement that I prepared?
Sure.
Okay, thanks. Great. Okay. So as I said, I'm with the Green Dalton Committee, and I worked with Ken and with Ed Fahey, our health agent and Board of Health, and the DEP itself to write this proposed bylaw. And I wanted to just give you guys an idea of the reason that we did this. One is that you may know or you may not know that we've already had mandatory recycling on the books in Dalton for over a decade. And what the existing regulation says is that residents in every household are required to recycle bottles, cans, are required to separate bottles, cans, and other material for recycling. But the phrase "residents in every household" was not defined in the original legislation. It was ambiguous. Some people have interpreted that to mean single-family homes only. And it was generally agreed that it definitely didn't mean apartment dwellers, and it definitely didn't mean commercial generators. And so we, this proposed bylaw, we intend to clarify that ambiguity by explicitly requiring that all residents, including apartment tenants, are required to recycle. We estimate that about 75% of Dalton households do not recycle regularly now. And we'd like to change that. The proposed bylaw also requires other non-residential generators to recycle. This means commercial, industrial, and institutional establishments in Dalton that'll now be required to recycle. We wrote this law, this proposed bylaw, for two reasons. One is because we want our town to be a better environmental steward. We want to do as much as we can as a community to keep useful materials out of landfills and incinerators. Because recycling bottles and cans and paper not only saves material resources like metal and fossil fuel and trees, but it also reduces the amount of energy that contributes to greenhouse gas emissions. And we've just learned from the scientific community that we have about 10 years to dramatically reduce our CO2 emissions before some of the very worst effects of climate change become unavoidable. And recycling is one activity we can all do to reduce greenhouse gas emissions associated with our consumption. The second reason we're doing this is, as I just answered this gentleman's question, is to come into compliance with the existing waste bans that already are on the books at the state level. Unfortunately, there hasn't been great enforcement of those waste bans. There's been a lot of looking the other way. And this proposed bylaw, it's consistent with the state waste bans, and it also has some teeth to add enforcement mechanisms, which we haven't had up until now. So there's a finding structure, and we're explicitly giving the Board of Health authority to enforce this. So all that being said, we realize that changing habits is not easy, and we want to help the residential and the commercial generators to learn to make recycling an everyday practice. So with that in mind, we're planning an education campaign where we're going to have posters and flyers. We're going to help the haulers in the town write letters that will go out either in the regular mail or along with your bills, your garbage bills, that will help you learn the do's and don'ts and to just make it as easy and convenient for you as possible. So we want to help Dalton usher in a new era of environmental stewardship and awareness of responsible consumption and sustainable resource use. So we urge you to pass this bylaw. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi. Cheryl Rose, also on the Green... North Mountain Road, 89 North Mountain Road. I just want to tell these guys the main difference between the new updated bylaw and the existing one we have on the books is just that it's going to include the larger apartment complexes that we have in town, the commercial institutions, that sort of thing. And I just want you to know that we're getting into the fine structure. That really isn't a residential thing. That is in the bylaw that the haulers are going to be dealing with because, and our Board of Health has already passed new regulations for our haulers where they haven't really been encouraging recycling because they have broken out recycling. It's already passed that they basically will be offering one price that includes recycling when they pick up at the curb. So there's going to be fines for residents.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor of Article six signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no.
No.
Passes. Thank you. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to amend the code of the Town of Dalton, Chapter 1, Article 2, Non-Criminal Disposition by amending the fine schedule in Section 1-5 under Chapter 23 Animals by inserting new fines in the language therefore substantially in the form on file with the town clerk or to take any other action in relation thereto. This is also the Select Board.
I move that the town vote to amend the code of Dalton, Chapter 1, Article 2, Non-Criminal Disposition by amending the fine schedule, Section 1 to 5, under Chapter 23 Animals, by inserting new fines in the language thereto as follows. Chapter 23 Animals, animal control officers, all violations under Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 173A. First offense, $50. Second offense, $100. Third offense, $300. And fourth and subsequent violations therefore, $500.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
Andre Robert, 5 Lindsay Drive. What exactly are we talking about here in terms of animals? What are we filing them for?
Mr. Walto.
Town Council might be better able to answer this, but it's for unlicensed dogs.
Unlicensed dog?
Unlicensed dogs. Anyone else? Mr. Lester, do you still have a camera?
I'm just thinking, we're playing it safe for relations of pets.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Just the terminology. And I, somewhere you're putting a lot of bounds.
Second.
Any further discussion under Article seven? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by saying no. Passes unanimously. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to raise, appropriate, or transfer from available funds a sum of money to fund a collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Dalton Patrol Officers Union, MCOP, Local 906, for fiscal year 2020 or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Droshin.
I move that the town vote to fund a collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Dalton Police Officers Union, MCOP, Local 906, in the amount of $18,933 and as set forth in Article 11 below.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Lester.
Yes. If we're in such financial straits here, why are we spending one foolishly? Seriously. You know, it's two years. We're coming at us. Now, let me give you a stat on Zillow. Today, there are 65 houses for sale in Dalton. Five days ago, there were 60. 10 days ago, there was 54. If that's a trend, we're in serious trouble. So if anybody votes tonight, I hope it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor of Article eight signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no.
No.
Passes. Thank you. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to fund a collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Dalton Highway Cemetery Association for fiscal year 2020 or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Droshin.
I move that the town vote to fund a collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Dalton Highway Cemetery Association in the amount of $3,393 and is set forth in Article 11 below.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor of Article nine signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no. Passes unanimously. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to fund a collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Dalton and the Dalton Dispatchers Association for fiscal year 2020 or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Droshin.
I move that the town vote to fund a collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Dalton Dispatchers Association in the amount of $5,941 and is set forth in Article 11 below.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor of Article 10 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no. Passes unanimously. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to amend the vote taken under Article four at the annual town meeting on May 6, 2019, to increase or reduce the sums of money raised and appropriated for several departments for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Droshin.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of money, or the sum of $40,050 for free cash in the treasury and raise $1,145 from offset receipts for revised appropriations in service departments for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, thereby amending those budgets as follows. Department 510, Board of Health, $5,000 for expenses. Department 210, Police, $20,723 for salaries. Department 222, Communications, $6,079 for salaries and $138 for expenses. Department 420, Highway, a reduction of $1,167 for salaries and an increase of $250 for expenses. Department 423, Snow and Ice, $545 for salaries. Department 440, Sewer, $1,145 for salaries. Department 491, Cemetery, $2,138 for salaries. Department 650, Parks, $482 for salaries. Department 123, Town Manager, $1,000 for salaries and transfer $1,000 from expenses to salaries. And further, that $23,101 be raised and appropriated in Department 145, Treasurer. And $644,485 be raised and appropriated in Department 710 excluded and $18,188 be transferred from account number 710. C, that's not excluded, right? Okay. To seven-ten, excluded, for additional maturing debt and interest.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Is, is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
Andre Rar, five minutes, he drive? What exactly is the additional maturing debt that we're paying off or is that what we're doing, paying off some debt?
Take it quite simply, the town issued bonds ten years ago for repair of the town hall for some other expenses and we wanted to pay those bonds off early, saving over six hundred thousand dollars. And we wanted to accelerate the payment for the demolition of the old Dalton High School. We have with us this evening David Eisenthal, our financial advisor, who brought this idea to us and I hope you'll allow him to address the assembly for a few minutes.
I move, will we allow him to speak?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'm David Eisenthal. I'm a vice president with Unibank Fiscal Advisory Services. I serve as municipal financial advisor to the town of Dalton. I work with the town manager, the town treasurer on borrowings. One of the issues we've been looking at is with the approval of the Wacona, the new Wacona High School, we've been looking at ways of structuring current projects and outstanding debt in ways to reduce total costs but also to ease some of the burdens on the taxpayers. As Ken said, about ten years ago, the town issued about one point five million dollars in bonds for town hall repairs, communication center and other purposes. The six hundred thousand of those bonds are now prepayable and the proposal is to, during fiscal year 2020, actually raise the principal of six hundred thousand dollars plus accrued interest of about nine thousand dollars on the fiscal year 2020 tax rate. That will be, that will represent all of the, all of the bonds that are currently outstanding for that purpose. And debt service that would have been about seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars will not be paid. It'll be the sick, about six hundred and nine thousand, saving about one hundred ten thousand dollars over the remaining period of the bonds. The thought here is that, our understanding is that the assessment from Central Berkshire Regional School District is scheduled to begin at least partially in fiscal year 2021. The full assessment, we understand, will be one point six million dollars a year, which is about between five hundred and six hundred dollars on the average home in Dalton. And the thought was to reduce, at least for the next several years, the impact of existing debt and also the current project for the demolition of old Dalton High School, thereby taking some of that impact sooner and reducing the impact when the full impact of the Wacona Regional School District capital assessments is felt. So, Mr. Moderator, I'll, I guess I...
Mr. Walton, if you'll be on a second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Lester.
Lori Brody, fifty-five, Diesel One Court. I'm just concerned, like everybody else in here, that the taxes are going to go off the wall. And you want to appropriate all this money for all these different things when we have a brand-new school coming up that's going to cost twenty-five million dollars? So that's going to add to our taxes. All this is adding to our taxes. And this money here, the six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, where is that coming from? You want to pay it off, but where does it come from?
Mr. Moderator, can I? The town would raise it in fiscal year 2020. This is debt that the town would be paying, the principal anyway, in fiscal years 2020 through 2028. The idea is that to pay it before the Wacona capital assessment is felt and to reduce the impact in the years when, when that capital assessment, two dollars and sixty-six cents on the tax rate, between five hundred and six hundred dollars on the average house. You're basically avoiding in those years, something like, you're reducing something like thirty dollars on the average homeowner in those years. I mean, it's not, compared to the five to six hundred dollars, it's not huge, but it does reduce that impact in the, in those later years. And it, and it produces an overall savings of over a hundred thousand dollars in total debt service.
Yeah, a lot of money, but we don't have the money to pay that off ourselves.
Correct.
What does it add to the tax rate right now?
Would you say that again, please?
There's six hundred eighty thousand dollars, seven thousand...
Your total tax base is about six hundred and twelve million dollars of this...
What's this going to add to?
Right. Well, the, it's, it's a dollar, it'll be about a dollar on the tax rate.
Way too much.
But it reduces the, but it reduces the tax impact.
To shave me thirty dollars two years from now? I don't think so.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Sudusette, Henry Day Drive. So that I can be clear, we did vote for a new school. We know our taxes are going to go up, but we thought they were going to be going up in 2021. If we approve this tonight, our taxes will start going up in 2020. Am I understanding that correctly?
My understanding is this is to avoid these debts from affecting us in the later years when the Wacona debt hits us, but...
I understand that, but it still means that it drays this money for this upcoming fiscal year, our tax rate will go up this coming fiscal year. In addition, it will go up again in 2021.
Mr. Walton.
That's an absolutely correct assessment. Town has a levy capacity to pay off the debt. You'd be raising your taxes this year to pay that debt so you don't have to pay extra debt in future years.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Tom Kelly in North Street. In lieu of everything, the financial picture, I think that's very good planning to do whatever you can to alleviate the tax bill that we all face.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, saying none. All those in favor of Article Eleven, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no.
No.
Passes. Article Twelve. Article Twelve, to see if the town will vote to rescind the unutilized balance of several prior years borrowing authorizations for completed capital improvement projects or to take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Droshein.
I move that the town vote to rescind the utilized balances of several prior years borrowing authorizations for completed capital improvement projects as follows. Highway dump truck, fiscal year 2016, five thousand ninety-one dollars. Police cruiser, 2018, one thousand two hundred eleven dollars sixty-five cents. Highway lawn maintenance equipment, 2016, eight hundred seventeen dollars and eighty-eight cents. Animal control vehicle, 2018, one hundred thirty-seven dollars. LED lights, 2019, one hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
Hi. Regent Holdman, six-four, Green Ridge Drive. On the LED streetlights, we've yet to see a final numbers on this completed project. Part of the Green Committee, the subcommittee on streetlights. With that being said, I don't think we're going to spend a hundred thousand dollars, but what happens if we need to spend some money and this amount's being rescinded? Is it prudent to amend that to, you know, fifty thousand? Maybe the Finance Committee can ask that.
Mr. Droshein.
At the, at the present time, this, this money has, as you well know, has not been used. And it's probably not going to be, be used as we have put in the budget for streetlights. May, there's, it's built into the, each fiscal year for maintenance of those streetlights. So the likeliness of us needing to come back to this is extremely low. And we would like to take this, this, this piece off of the table so that we can better manage it.
But we haven't seen any numbers on maintenance of streetlights yet.
Because nothing's probing. That I can tell you for sure.
And there's, and there's four, four old streetlights that still is counted, but getting switched out, which I understand is, but my point being is, you said we probably won't need to, but if we take all this money away if we need to, what's the situation there?
This would probably, we won't have to replace all of the streetlights. And, and this would probably do, I believe, about fifty percent, wouldn't it? If we were to lose fifty percent of the lights?
Lights are guaranteed, but, but, streetlights are guaranteed for ten years and they have a useful life of twenty years. We believe that, as, as Bill said, that the streetlight account will be sufficient to take care of it. And should something unexpected arise, we have access to the reserve fund controlled by the Finance Committee so they can take care of any emergencies.
But what we're saying is, the streetlight project has not been finished yet. Hasn't been signed up yet.
That's, that's true, but at this point, we don't believe that we're going to need any large expenditure of money to complete the project.
But we can, we can access money if we need to.
Yes, we, we have money available to access. This isn't needed to, if we need to access money, we have other, other funds that we can use to, to get that work done if we have to. And that's, I know there's sixty-five thousand in the reserve fund that the Finance Committee controls, plus there's money still, we haven't, because we don't know how much it's going to cost us, we haven't reduced the streetlight budget at this point. And, and as far as I know, we're level funded for this year on that budget. So for 2020, we'll be level funded. If it looks like we're not going to need that much any longer, we'll reduce that budget.
I have a question for Bill. I thought we were going to get...
Mr. Lester, go ahead.
I thought we were going to get eighty thousand dollars in savings. Wouldn't it be self-perpetuating that account? Or what are you going to use any grand for? No police cruiser?
Well, that, that, that's, that was the, the point, the, the point that I just made and why we don't need this hundred thousand dollars. Because that, that account's going to be sufficiently funded. And as I said, if we find that we don't have problems, well, we're, we won't, we will be able to reduce that number if we find that we don't have problems. That, the, the level of problems are reduced. First and foremost, we are no longer leasing lights from ever source. That's probably one of the largest pieces of savings that we have received from this. Also, we're using much less electricity, I think, than we anticipated. So that budget presently is funded at a higher level, but if we see that maintenance drops, then we'll be able to reduce that budget and maybe pay for a cruiser.
Anyone else? Hearing none, saying none. All those in favor of Article Twelve, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. Thank you, passes unanimously. Mr. Droshein.
I move that we adjourn.
They're moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, meeting is over. Thank you, everybody. Have a good summer.